And Jan, Meek. Okay.
Okay. We'll all stand for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on our agenda is public comments and questions on Agenda Business. Maria, do we have any?
Let's see. No, we do not.
Okay. Next on our agenda, I need an approval of the consent agenda.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please, Maria.
Okay. Sarah Allen? Yes, okay, I'm sorry. John Chartier?
Yeah.
Melissa, me, yes. Kevin, is that in? Okay, Diane?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Motion passed, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is information and discussion item. Jan, you're up with the finance report.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to update you on the status of our FEMA application. I was able to submit that last week. The people of FEMA were extremely helpful. I feel good about our chances to have it approved. We ended up applying for a million eight thousand nine thousand, kind of threw everything in there that I could possibly think of, including some temporary help for social workers and substitute teachers and, of course, all the technology items, cleaning, disinfecting. We have 25 electrostatic sprayers for the buses. So we have everything that we can possibly think of. Should know in about two to three weeks what the approval will look like. I'm hoping if we got half of that, I would be thrilled. That's just money that, kind of, extra. I put the temporary custodians that the board approved last month, the five temporary custodians. They do feel that we will get that. I should say that the reimbursement is 75% of our actual costs. So hopefully by the next board meeting, that will be approved. Like I said, we work closely with the FEMA people. I didn't attempt to tackle this on my own. I've never done a FEMA application. So we spent about five hours in Zoom calls with them to make sure that the verbiage and everything was just so. So I wanted to update you on that. And then tonight, an action item tonight. Every July, the board is asked to approve our school bond loan fund application. And that is just, that gives me the ability to borrow the money that we need to make our debt payments. So we never have to borrow in the fall. That's interest only. But in the spring, we typically do borrow and we expect to borrow next spring as well. So that is the, that's the action item that I have for tonight.
And Jan, how much do you think we would need to borrow? What compares?
It was, included in the packet, it was a little over eight million. But then next year, it goes way down. That's because we did the refunding for the school bond loan fund. So that was being paid off, like, within five years. And then it goes way down after that. It saved us several million dollars in interest doing it that way.
And I guess maybe I need clarification. We're borrowing eight million or are we paying about eight million to pay up that debt?
Borrowing this coming year.
Okay.
But we took the, we had a large school bond loan fund balance. We took that at a high interest rate, took that and refinanced it all at a lower interest rate. So the total interest savings is into the millions.
And we're still on track to finish paying this off per the law?
Yeah, 2032, that's when we are mandated to pay off our, the school bond loan fund. And yes, we are. And a part of this requirement of what the board's approving tonight, we have to do a, like, a study. And RJ Naughton, who everyone's familiar with, he actually does the study for us. So it's not just coming from me, just to make sure, and that's submitted with the application, to make sure that, yes, the district is on track to repay the school bond loan fund on time.
Okay, anybody else got any questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have an education report. Dr. Allaw?
Absolutely. So I wanted to give an update. A couple of weeks ago, we had a work session where we talked a little bit about our fall educational options for the district. We had a little bit of dialogue at that time. We have since launched the Brandon Learn From Home. I'm going to pull this up on the screen in just a moment. And I'm going to let Mr. Wyatt talk a little bit about what's gone up on our webpage and kind of where we're at with that. But we basically have two things that we're looking at right now. One, our in-person options. And the other is the Learn From Home option. And Mr. Wyatt can talk about the Learn From Home options, which we discussed last time. But let me give you a quick update on in-person. In-person, we have, as you know, we've come up with and we've communicated with our families about the types of models that we could do in the fall. We are basically between two spots here. One is some sort of alternating day model, where it would be an A-B day. And I can show you what that might look like. I've shared that out with families already. But the other option that many districts are talking about right now is returning full-time with everyone, with all of the different safety recommendations that are out there, with the social distancing. That was one of the question marks that was out there. And I know that's a discussion that's continuing. Just being open and honest on this, that this is an area of, when it comes to the health, the medical side of it, we need to take advice from professionals. So that's why we're not pulling the trigger at this point. But it will be one of those two options, some sort of every-other-day hybrid or it will be some sort of full-day, five-day for all students, like what we've communicated. So before I turn it and pull up the stuff for Mr. Wyatt to talk, what questions, comments does the board have regarding the in-person options?
Do you have a ballpark idea on when you will know if it will be option one or two? Because I know several parents that are waiting to decide on Brandon Learn From Home or in-person because they need to know which kind of in-person the school will be offering.
Absolutely. So Jan, Diane, Carley and I had that conversation this morning about what we were going to, like, how would we would approach that. And August 10th is the date that we set is really, we have to know if people are going to be in Brandon Learn From Home by August 10th. So in our conversation, we're tentatively talking about July 31st as being kind of our time when we have to let parents know so that they have a couple of weeks to digest and think and ask questions so that they can make an ultimate decision by August 10th. Tomorrow, I'm having a meeting with all of the Northwest superintendents. And we're going to have some dialogue on that because we're trying to work together on this topic. All of our districts, we're really looking at doing the similar type models. If we're going to do an alternating day, we would all do some sort of alternating day. If everybody's going back, we're all going to go back. It's going to be that kind of approach just because we really want to work together as a team on that. So have that meeting tomorrow. But July 31st is what we penciled in for Brandon as a time when we thought parents need to know by then so they can make a decision. Is that good?
Yeah, it would be safe to say that maybe parents should keep in mind that it's fluid in that in 30 days, a lot could change. So like, say that the area picked the return to full days with safety precautions. If a lot changed and the area decided to go to the hybrid model, I mean, it's just a fluid situation? Or is it if we pick by July 31st and it's return full, that's pretty much guaranteed?
No.
Sorry, there's no person.
No, you're 100% right. This is, this is fluid and a lot of this decision comes from the governor's office. And so for us, I think, let's say we're going to use the July 31st. What we will say is this, if we were to decide today, this is what we would be doing. And we would probably put in there, that could change depending what phase we're in. You know, if we get moved back to Phase 3 as a state or if the governor says, no, you will not be going back with all students. You're going to be doing something different. And those are all possibilities that are out there. So yeah, you're 100% right. So we'll do, based on our best information we have on July 31st.
Okay, I have one more. I'm sorry.
No, great, please. That's why we're talking about it.
So one more is, can we go into the social distancing just a little bit? Because I know that the American Pediatric Association or whatever said three to six foot and other school districts around us said we're just not social distancing. So can you just clarify how those decisions for our district will be made?
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to go back to what I said before. We have nobody that works for the school system that's a medical professional. And so I don't mean to sound grasshopper. I think that the Oak County Health Department is what the executive order asks us to listen to what they're telling us to do. And so I think we need to get kind of a little bit more detail about what's being recommended versus required by the Health Department. So I think that's, that's an important part, I think, for our team. We really want science and the medical profession to be telling us what to do versus, you know, word of mouth or, you know, other superintendents. At the end of the day, we're all going to lean on the medical professionals to make those decisions. And I know that American Pediatric article was talking about that the distance, difference between three feet and six feet from their study was very insignificant. And that was the difference between being able to come back to school with everybody or not. Again, I'm not a medical professional to be able to, you know, vet that. So anyway, we're going to listen to medical professionals and make the decision, you know, that they recommend. Does that, does that answer it? I don't mean to cop out. I just, we're not medical professionals.
No, I just wanted to clarify a little bit more, so.
No, it's a, it's a great question. It's, it's the question that we're all talking about. It's the one getting me up in the middle of the night, all this stuff, wondering how, you know, it's all going to work. So again, we have to listen to the experts. Other questions about the in-person piece of this?
No, I don't.
Oh, go ahead, Diane.
No.
So one other comment on in-person. So one part of it is the models. What will it look like? There's another part of it that is all the backside stuff, which is really significant. It's everything from screening protocols to what do you do if you get positive cases to cleaning protocols to how do buses work? It is absolutely, hey, it's quite a monumental task, I'll just say. Jan has been taking the lead on so much of this and we've had all kinds of meetings. Those are continuing, really ahead of the game on a lot of this stuff. But that, that work will continue. But there's going to be a lot more detail that will come over the next month and a half if we're going to be coming back in-person, whether that is alternating days or fully in-person. Just wanted to know, let you know that there's a ton of detail behind the in-person option. Is there any questions on that for Jan?
A ton of them, but it's just all the logistics. And I kind of felt like once we decided the hybrid or return to full, that would that be information related at that time to parents? Like, this is what the day would be like? This will be the protocols? Will all of it be released at the same time?
Yeah, I think we would want to release everything that we know at that time. Things, like you said, are going to be fluid. And, you know, some of the things, they might not need to know, every single cleaning, you know, point, that type of thing. They need to know what's happening in the classroom, the timing. Jan, any comments that you wanted to share on this?
Well, from the support side, we have, I would like to release, maybe sooner rather than later, the safety measures where we plan to follow in terms of touch point cleaning and the bus protocol, how, you know, we're spraying the buses. I think right now, we're planning to spray them after every run. We bought these electrostatic sprayers. That was a recommendation, requirement from the governor. So I would like to do some sort of, please, or whatever. Matt and I haven't decided what that would look like to give some, the community some peace of mind that we're doing all of these things in terms of cleaning and keeping the buildings disinfected and that type of thing, and the buses as well.
Other questions about the in-person stuff? Okay, so Mr. Wyatt, would you like me to call up the website? Or do you want to do it on your end?
Sure. If you don't mind, I'd like to call on yours. That'd be great if you're able to.
Okay. Share screen. I can't hear. Mr. Wyatt? Do you want to go ahead and get us started here?
Yeah, for sure. So starting early is last week, actually, it was a week ago today, we sent a survey to parents to ask them if they would like to be part of the Brandon Learn From Home program, which is an online option that we discussed from the previous board meeting. And that survey results, so far, we have gotten 265 responses as of this evening. Of those responses, we have 88 that are from the high school, 73 that are from Harvey Swanson, 63 that are from the middle school and 40 that are from Oakwood. So so far, a decent response when it comes to Brandon Learn From Home. As we kind of go through this, we launched Brandon Learn From Home website, which was also Tuesday. A hot shot for parents as well as students who are interested in learning more about this program as well as enrolling. So in this, you can, essentially, there's a Q and A section. So as we scroll down, you'll see up at the top that all of these different headings you're able to click on. And on those headings, it, like, when it says "Q sheet", which is a frequently asked question sheet. The first thing that you'll see is kind of our commitment to our parents as well as our students and what our plan is for the future as we move forward due to COVID-19. And then from there, we have a full sheet of questions and answers, stuff that we kind of already knew was going to be questions, but stuff that we've actually gotten from parents as well as students during this process that we've added on there. And that way, it's a one-stop shop. Also, parents can go through and they're able to look at what a sample schedule is, which is kind of the next part down here. Dr. Allaw, were to click on that. I know we looked at a few sample schedules the last time that we spoke. This here kind of has a little bit more structure as well as opportunities for our students as we head into next year. So if we are at the elementary level, most likely, students at the elementary level are maybe going to have the least amount of options. What I mean by that is they are going to be working full-time with a Brandon School District teacher and support staff. If there is a situation or a circumstance where we need to provide them with a vendor option, which would be through our own Summit Virtual or the old Brandon Virtual, we will do so. But most of our elementary students will be working right with a Brandon teacher. For our secondary students, middle school and high school, they will kind of get a series of options. This works a little bit easier for our high school students, but middle school students can work into their schedule as well. So where they can either, option A, work full-time at home, online with a Brandon staff member, which is kind of that purple shaded region. The next region is a fully virtual option, which means they would be working in conjunction with, this would kind of be with Mr. Moore, Brian Moore, with Summit Virtual, where they are doing vendor programs through Summit Virtual. So they would not necessarily have a Brandon teacher assigned. Or the last option is the green option, which is the hybrid model. The hybrid model would be a combination of multiple things. So it could be a combination of where they're working online at home with a Brandon teacher and maybe for a few classes, they're going into the high school or middle school to take, such as band or choir or STEM at the high school level. Maybe that means that they're doing some of their classes through Brandon Learn From Home and/or they're doing some of their classes through Summit Virtual. So they're doing kind of this, you know, working with a Brandon teacher for several other classes, but a few of their elective classes, they want more flexibility due to a work schedule or whatever, and they're able to do that through a Brandon Virtual. So there's a lot of different hybrid options that are out there, too. So those are provided to our secondary students. Some of those options may be available to elementary, their schedules a little bit more fit. This kind of shows through a sample, how much a schedule would look like. Once again, it's a sample. The times very well may change. The differences of, you know, if reading or math goes first or whatever. But this just gives parents and students an idea of what we might be doing every single day. So we have a literacy component to it as well as then an independent time. Then there'll be a Zoom time for math and an independent time for math, a lunch and kind of a recess break, if you want to call it that. And then from there, we come back for a social studies. Now, social studies and science. And then the last day would be a health lesson. Those would alternate. And those would just go back and forth between the days. And then from there, we'd have an activity time. And the active time would be, you know, something that they learn from there, their social studies class or their science class, where they're doing actual direct learning from that. And then we'd have a student support time that's built in. You can see that at the beginning of the day as well as here towards the end of the day, where we have teachers as well as other support staff working with the parents and students if needed. And then we have then these optional times, which are the special times for such things as music or phys ed or art, et cetera, for students to work on at the elementary level. Any questions in regards to the elementary level as you see it?
So since I don't have kids in school anymore, how, is this going to be very similar to how the delivery was back in the spring when we had to switch, like, from a teacher perspective?
Yeah, great question. Yes, it will be very similar. I think there, what the one thing that you're going to see the difference with is that in many cases, at least with some of the parents I've spoken to from the elementary level, one of their greatest concerns was is that their students were logged in for long periods of time and it was nothing but, in many cases, it's direct instruction where, you know, a lot of the younger students, they just don't have the capacity to sit there for that amount of time to listen to somebody talk. What we'll do with Brandon Learn From Home is that there will be a component to where there is some direct instruction as well as some guided practice and whatnot within there. But the teacher, him or herself, they will just be present for an hour. After they're done doing their direct instruction, answering questions or whatnot, they'll just be present. And as the kids are beginning to work independently on their own with the reading, the writing, the math, whatever, the teacher will be there to start answering questions, ask kids. You know, on Zoom, you're able to kind of raise your hand or do a Q and A. And the teacher will do that accordingly. So that did make a few parents very excited knowing that their kid wasn't going to be hunkered down now for 90 minutes listening to a teacher or for, you know, 60 minutes. It was going to be more kind of very quick, an introduction, some practice. And then from there, it was more the independent side where the parents were going to kind of take on that coaching role.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions about the elementary sample schedule? All right, Dr. Allaw, if you want to scroll down now to the middle school level. So when we look at middle school, really, we're just following what the middle school schedule currently is. And so middle school starts at 7:35 and it currently ends at 2:30 PM. So we're just going to follow that schedule. Students who are working with all Brandon teachers, which is through the Brandon Learn From Home program, we are just following a set schedule of whatever it was that they chose or whatever it is that they need depending on their grade level. So there's a sample sixth grade level or an eighth grade level. Obviously, seventh grade would look very similar to that. If there was a, an eighth grader or a seventh grader or even a sixth grader to where we needed to create a little bit more flexibility for whatever the reason was, we could do that. And that is what Dr. Allaw is showing you there in kind of that green or gray color shaded region to where we could provide vendor-style classes. And that would be through then Summit Virtual or our Brandon Virtual program that we've already had for the last nine years here in the district. So students could have a little bit more flexibility. Maybe there's a certain elective that they wanted to take. We could opt them into that. If there was an opportunity for an eighth grader or a sixth grader or a seventh grader to go back to the school for some reason, for a class or two, we could try to work that out as well. Obviously, transportation would be a bit of an issue. So that would, we would have to know upfront that the parent was able to pick up and drop off that student for those programs. But there are those options for those kids. Any questions in regards to the sample middle school schedule that we're looking at?
So one other question, again, I assume for middle and high school. The kids already have scheduled their classes, I'm assuming? And this is just an overlay of how it's going to be executed?
Yes, absolutely. So especially for the middle school and really when we get into the high school, the students have already chosen their schedules. The counselors have already and they're, even over the summer, continuing their work as far as placing students into classes, you know, according to what their preferences are. From there, we'll set the schedule accordingly. So if a student says, hey, I'm in STEM, and we can kind of look at this as we head down to the high school, I'm in STEM. STEM is something that is probably primarily going to be offered in-person just because of the magnitude of supplies and projects and whatnot that they do. It just would almost be impossible to do from a virtual setting. So that would be an in-person. So they would come in, they would do those set of classes that they need. Then they have the option to then go home and they can do the rest at home through Brandon Learn From Home and/or the Summit Virtual, the vendor courses. So yeah, it's essentially set for them.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? And so in the high school, you'll see a little bit more flexibility. A lot of this is really because a lot of the students drive, especially as they get older, into their later sophomore year and then into their junior, senior year. And so, once again, we just follow the set class schedule is what we have. We have six hours in the day at Brandon High School. So we start at 7:25, we end at 2:10, or excuse me, 2:20. And we have then a lunch break kind of in the middle as we saw in the other two schedules above. And so from there, these are sample ninth grade schedules or 10th grade schedules. This would be all from Learn From Home. A student sitting, talking, working with a teacher as well as other Brandon students from a computer at home. And then we have what a potential Brandon Learn From Home slash vendor-type schedule would look like in the green or gray color. And that shows that students would maybe take some math or history or algebra-type or science classes. And then from there, they would take other classes through Summit Virtual. And then a sample all-vendor schedule to where they would, you know, as Summit says, anytime, anyplace, anypace. And that could be a potential set schedule. We do have some students, as of right now, there are approximately 10 students that have, or and parents, I should say as well, that have fully said that they would like to potentially look at that option due to multiple reasons. Most of our parents are leaning more towards the Brandon Learn From Home with a Brandon teacher or with some elective opportunities in there through a vendor. But we do have approximately right now 10 to 15 of our students who are looking at doing the all-Summit Virtual option due to some of its work schedules, some of it's due to family time, some of it's due to computer access, et cetera. Any questions about the high school schedule as we see?
Yeah, I have a question, Dave. Are we still doing the woodworking in the tiny house? And is that still going to be a class?
Yes, absolutely. So we would have with students- So we would have with students, that would be an opportunity and a possibility if they wanted to go back in person. So if I'm a student who is open to wanting to do those things, and there are many parents that are actually very open to this idea of a hybrid, doing some at home and then some at school, they agree with the sociability part and everything. So that would still be offered. Obviously, it'd be more of an in-class. If we had a student who was just flat-out uncomfortable going, Eric Swanson, as well as other CTE-style teachers, they've already said they are, they have a toolbox full of different things they can give to those students to do from home as well. But it would be offered to them. Hey, do you want to do this at home, or would you like to come in for an hour or two, whatever, to do this from the campus?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Wyatt, is that it? Or did you want to?
Yeah, that's really it. I mean, the rest of the website, like you said, we've really checked. I see that over all the feedback, I have tried to personally contact by phone every parent that has emailed me. There's been a few parents that it hasn't worked out, so it's just been easier doing back-and-forth email. Most of the parents have been just calling them. They are, there's been so many just simple thank yous for us even offering our opportunity for this. There's been a lot of parents that feel that we've eased their worries in their mind by doing this as well. So I know Dr. Outlaw gets emails too. We've been acting forth over the course of the several weeks. And it's been actually a very positive experience for those that are interested in it. And there's quite a bit of excitement, actually, from a few students that I've spoken to at the high school level.
Any other questions at all about the Learn From Home?
In regards to Brandon Learn From Home, Dr. Outlaw, turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Wyatt. Other questions at all about any of the educational plan items for the fall?
Okay. I feel like it's a great positive too, and I feel like it's going to help these kids transition off to college too, because I feel like this is just going to be status quo going forward. So they're going to get eased into it instead of like the shock value as a freshman in college and stuff too. So congratulations, it sounds like a great thing.
Agreed. Go ahead, Sarah.
Am I breaking up when I talk?
No.
Okay. I never know on my internet, so. Okay, so here's some things that I've been hearing from parents. And what I'm assuming is that all of these will get answered at least by July 31st or shortly after. It would be like, are there going to be temperature checks in the morning, and how will that be done? If teachers are sick and they have to be out in quarantine, how will they be paid? And how will we make sure we have substitutes? What will recess and lunch look like? How do we safely have choir and band when we need to have masks? If there is testing, who's going to pay for the testing if it's required by, if we're requiring it, or how that would work for families or staff? If a staff or student is sick and there needs to be quarantining, how does that quarantine look like, and like what does that expand out to? And if there is a quarantine, would that whole class go into online schooling for two weeks? Or would it just be you're quarantined at home? And then the last one would be about the hybrid schedules that Mr. Wyatt just talked about. So if I'm in middle or high school and I mainly learn from home, but there's a couple of things that I want to do, when and how would we go about making a hybrid schedule of the kids maybe going in for a few hours every day, but they're mostly from home? So that's a whole slew of a lot of questions, which I'm assuming are already on your, the admins plates. But will most of that be answered here within the next couple of weeks?
It will. A lot of those items are health department items. Again, we're not medical professionals, so a lot of those, we're waiting for some direction, like about the screening. Like 14 days, we all talk about what that looks like. But is it 14 days if you were at an event and some person there, or is it your family? Or, so I think there's just details with it, and we really want to be consistent across the county on that. A lot of these things, like for example, choir and band, that was a great question on that. So we've had conversations really early in the process on this with our directors. And we said, what can we do for band to make sure that we have a music experience if we weren't allowed to do singing or playing of the instruments? And they both come up with some really good options, music appreciation and music history, and some of the more music theory-type things that we could do to plug the gap until they're able to get back fully, perhaps. So there's plans in place, and our band and choir directors have been really creative to make sure that our students don't miss out on the quality music experience, no matter what happens. So a lot of people are saying, we're not going to run choir, we're not going to run band. We are going to run those things, it just might look different depending on what those rules are. There's, those are great questions. A lot of those are ones that we're really either waiting for or we're still discussing. There is on the website, if you look in the quick links on the webpage, there is educational options, it's the first tab in Quick Links, and there's a link there to submit questions. People could submit questions there, and right below it, there's a Google Doc where we're answering questions as people have those. Also, I know all of us are getting tons of emails. I'm getting, you know, a ton of emails every day and talking to people on the phone. Reach out to us, we can answer questions about any of this stuff. Don't, you know, it's no bother whatsoever, they're quick responses. And some of the things, just be patient, that we don't know the answer to some of this stuff. But don't hesitate to ask any questions that you have. That would be what I would encourage the public.
Could we have, behind your designs, do a post on social media with the Quick Links link where parents can submit questions? Because I think parents would like to know that they could quickly just put it in there or see if their question's already been asked, so they know that's an option.
Sure, that's a good idea. I'll put it, so we sent it out to all parents in that newsletter. But I like the idea of maybe doing it on social media, just as a follow-up, just to make sure. That's a good idea, I'm going to write that down right now. Thank you. Good suggestion. Any other questions or comments on the fall plans?
No, I just have to say, I did run into a couple of parents that they are hoping in a lot of ways that our school buildings do open. And I told them, it's still being ironed out as the governor and the health departments comes up with what our restrictions and/or protocol is going to be. So they know, and they're being patient, the parents I talked to.
Yeah, and I would, if people ask those questions, I would let people know that, based on what we're, what we have right now, we are really committed to doing a quality in-person option for our students. And we are, we are committed to doing that. If it changes from the governor's side, we just think there's so much value in the face-to-face for so many of our students. They really rely on our teachers and staff. And there's that human touch that I think we all know. And I know we're going to talk about our board meetings, you know, for August, that human touch. Speaking of that, it's different than being in computers. So anyway, I would just encourage the message getting out that we really do want to get back to as close to normal as possible, that's safely possible. And just, I think a lot of our students really are depending on that, so.
Absolutely. Anybody else, any questions? Okay, next, finally, introduction of Carly Stone.
Yeah. Okay, so briefly, I just want to let you know that we had a great process in place to fill our position of Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We had a lot of applicants, we did screening of a number of candidates, we did multiple rounds. We had teachers, parents, other staff members, administrators, part of this process of really screening. And we had one candidate that just really rose to the top, was just exemplary. I think when we, she applied, I think I called her about five minutes after she submitted her application. And she comes to us with great experience. She comes from Waterford, she could talk about that in a second, from the curriculum department. But more than that, I think her experience is one thing. Two is like successful, the success that she has had, the things that she's been able to do and to bring to Waterford, I think really stood out, that results. It's one thing hiring somebody saying, we hope, or I hope to do this stuff. It's another thing, looking at somebody's track record and seeing a proven track record of success. That really rose to the top. And then the other thing that you'll, you'll see here tonight, when the Stone gets a chance to talk, is personality, the people side of things. We really felt that the way that she sees education and teachers and their role is really going to help bring our team together. And we just think we hit a home run, so we're very excited about presenting Carly Stone to you tonight.
Go ahead, Carly, tell us about yourself.
Okay, first, thank you, Matt, that was very, very kind of you. I appreciate that tremendously. Yes, hello. I have been in education, this will be my 16th year. I have been in Waterford my entire career. I began as a middle school math and science teacher, sixth grade teacher. I love those sixth graders. And after several years, transitioned to a Dean of Students position at the middle school. Later, transitioned to an Assistant Principal High School position in Waterford. And then I have been in my current role in Waterford for six years and as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So a lot of the job functions that this role has in Brandon are very similar to what I currently do. But there are some additional responsibilities I'll be taking on in Brandon as well. Just super-duper excited. I have a very special place in my heart for Waterford, and I always will. And I'm very grateful to them and what they've done for me and my family. But I'm really excited for a new opportunity. You know, some folks in Brandon, I did work with Dave Wyatt years ago. He's also from Waterford, and there's some other folks as well, which I'm excited to see again. And I just, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity. I see great things in our future, and I have a lot of passion and excitement for education and teaching and learning, and I can't wait to bring that to Brandon.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I have to tell you, our kids are smart kids. Our parents are great parents, and they want their kids educated. And I could tell you, they walk out of here extremely prepared for college and beyond, so. But I hope you can feel some big shoes, and that's funny, Dave, I forgot Dave was from Waterford also.
Yes. Yeah, well, thank you. I can't wait. It's really, it's going to be, I've heard about so many great people and the families. I was really impressed by the stories that the committee was sharing with me about the community and our students and our families. And I just think it's a really good fit, so. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I will be starting with you guys on August 6th.
Great.
Anybody have any questions? Sorry, anybody got questions for Carly? Thanks, Carly, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, we have our action items. If I could get it up, motion for the annual school bond loan fund resolution.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the annual school loan bond fund resolution as presented.
Okay, anybody need any further discussion? I know we discussed it already. Okay, seeing none. Mary Ann, if I could get a roll call, vote please.
Sarah Allen?
Yes.
John Chartier?
Yes.
Marion Dwyer, yes. Let's see, Diane?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. Okay, next, we get an approval for the new hire of Carly Stone as Curriculum Director. Can I get a motion, please?
The Brandon Board of Education approved the hiring of Carly Stone as presented.
Okay, I don't think we need any discussion on that. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Mary Ann?
Sure. Sarah Allen?
Yes.
John Chartier?
Yes.
Marion Dwyer, yes. Diane?
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard, Carly. Okay, next, citizens input. Maria, do we have anybody?
We do not have anyone at this time, Diane.
Diane, could I, could I throw one thing out there before? Diane, could I throw one thing out there? You know, we had had some dialogue about August, especially if we're going to be going back and doing some in-person, about at least doing something with in-person for our board meeting in August. Is that a topic you wanted to quickly discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to, because again, you know my, my opinion on that too, so, yes.
Well, board members, is there any concern about us doing a board meeting where we might have social distancing? We did interviews in-person where we had desks set up and everything like that spread out. What are your thoughts on that, board members?
I'm fine with that.
Fine with that, as you can hear my dog chewing beside me, it might not be. All the time he was like.
I was hoping you could hear my husband doing the dishes downstairs. So, but no, I asked if we could get back in person, obviously.
Yeah, and we would require people to wear masks if they come to the meeting, obviously, and all that.
All right. And then Diane, is it possible, Diane Zidane, I was supposed to mention her during the education report, and I skipped her. She is doing some summer stuff, could she give just a quick update on what's happening with summer stuff?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
So some of the things that you questioned, the idea that we had some parents who are interested in doing Camp Hawks, which is for elementary students, JK through fifth grade, sort of our latchkey program. We had about, initially, we had about 20 families who were interested, and there was about, you know, 24 kids who they had planned on participating. And as we, you know, took surveys, and there wasn't enough kids for the first week, so we pushed it off to start last week, was our first week. And since then, I had seven families and nine students canceled. Some canceled because of, they didn't go back to work, and that was what, they had planned on going back to work. And some, you know, just decided that they'd find, found other arrangements. But we do have about, right now, 18 students, 12 families involved. We do have the safety protocols involved. The thing about licensing is they asked us to put together a plan to reopen the latchkey or your childcare kinds of facilities. So we, my staff wanted to check foreheads and temperatures, so we asked the questions, all the COVID questions. Have you been around people with COVID? Do you have, you had any illnesses in your family? Are you and your child, you know, healthy? And the children in your family, or anyone in your household, say, healthy? And then we do take temperatures before the children come into the door. There's also a schedule about every hour to an hour and a half, depending on the activities. The children are all washing their hands. Custodians are involved, they're coming in every couple hours, again, at specific times, to do touch points, restrooms, you know, so like the children come in around 8:30, 10 o'clock, there's a cleaning, 12, there's a cleaning, 2, there's a cleaning, 4, there's a cleaning. So we have those safety issues involved. All the staff is wearing masks, the children are not wearing masks, so it's very similar to what we would be doing to support social distancing. You know, it's a camp kind of situation, so every child is bringing a big beach towel, which is about five feet or six feet apart, and they put that on the floor. If they go outside and they're on the grass, they're using that as their social distancing, social, you know, their physical distancing space. Let's see, what else? And we've worked with Monica, they are bringing in, you know, separate lunches, so the children are not sharing food. They've got their own things that they're sharing, and they're giving it to Penny. And all the kids are getting free lunches if they wanted it. And then for those children who want, they take food home on Thursdays for the weekend, if that's something they'd like. So sort of our, you know, like you're saying, we, it was my hope to let people know that, you know, the schools are fine, you know, we can come back and we can do things safely. And it's a very small, you know, sort of a sample group that we're doing this with. Not sure exactly what we, it would look like in, you know, with the elementary, with, you know, 500 kids, but at least in a But at least in a small setting, it seems to be working fine. You know, it might be, might have little different protocols for different, you know, age levels and grade levels. But in this setting, it seems to be working well. Parents seem to be happy. Children are having a great time and so it seems safe. So I just wanted to share that.
Great job, Diane. Appreciate that. I, yes, I'm glad you were able to do that report.
Thank you.
And Matt, just another thing too. Our food service is still giving meals to the community, correct?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I saw it posted, yep. If you're muted.
Muted, Jan.
Yes, they've worked so hard and done a fabulous job. In addition to the meals that they're preparing, the box lunches, we're handing out fresh produce boxes. And we're starting with a, like a cheese type box as well. So it's grown and the families are really appreciating.
I just was really pleased. I saw something to get. Wow.
Okay. Well, thanks, Diane.
Okay, okay. You have theme members on Sunday. I know I'll get specifics, I think, tomorrow for graduation. Hopefully you guys will be there, gals will be there. Anything else, Matt?
Nope. I think that should be great. Thank you so much.
Okay. No, thank you. And meeting adjourned. Thank you everybody. Welcome, Carly, again.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
All the way. Okay. Take care, everybody. Talk to you soon.
Bye. Bye.